And the first thing I'd like to go into is, of course, our administrative matters. And the reason I said July was because the first thing on my list is our July retreat, which we said tentatively scheduled for July 10th. We checked and I believe TCC is available on July 10th. So I would like it, if there's no objection, to schedule that for a full day's retreat, one day. And I'd like you to mark your calendars for July 10th and please be available for the entire day.
Just one day?
Just one day. We are postponing the February 20th, until February 27th, the workshop on accountability reform and state accreditation that was scheduled for this evening. It was brought to my attention that the data for our school division from the Virginia Department of Education has not completely calculated and will not be confirmed until the end of the month or possibly the first part of February. And therefore, it's not possible to do any comparison of our school division with the impending changes to accountability reform, accountability reform and state accreditation. We will have more accurate information by the February 27th meeting. And we are planning to have a closed session either right immediately after this workshop or if there's not enough time, we'll have it directly after our formal meeting this evening. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to bring forward at this time? Mr. Edwards?
Not to go into detail, but those of us that are going to be in DC, we probably ought to coordinate at least return transportation. I've been working with Joel and I'm trying to get Scott Taylor pinned down when he's available, ideally in the PM on Monday, because we're hopefully going to see the senators on Monday in the PM as well. But it's hard, it's hard in fairness to him, because I'm saying, "Well, we need to meet with you, but we don't know when we're available yet." But transportation back either very late Monday or early Tuesday, so we can be back in time for the estimate of needs Tuesday night. We may very well end up, I don't know what tentative plans are to stay Monday night or not, but we may have to in order to do what we want. Anyway, that's only half the board, so I'm not going to tie up the whole board trying to go in. I just, a heads up, we need to try to do that. Those that are driving, some of us that are not driving up there may want to try to grab it right back, because the transportation coming back is difficult on public conveyance.
Right. I.e. the train.
Or bus. Or bus.
I haven't looked at the bus.
Any other, Ms. Williams?
Yes, can you clarify what the closed session is? Because I talked with Ms. Lynetti, she indicated that it might be something that we've already discussed, or some kind of voting on the buyout or what is a closed session about?
It's not, doubt, doubt it'll be voting, but it is clarification on a matter that we've already discussed. It is. We discussed last time.
Well...
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that it's closed material, worthy material.
I know. And I think it is.
How do we know that?
Well, I'm not at liberty to go into it, because it's a closed session, but you know, we need to have a closed session to just have this discussion.
Can we ask it this way? Mrs. Lynetti, is the, in your legal opinion, is it, is it appropriate for the, what we're going to close session? Is it appropriate in fulfilling the guidelines of what we're allowed to go into a closed session for?
It is the same thing we talked about at the last meeting. People want a clarification. Any action coming out, that would have to be done in the open session.
Right. Okay. You just need to remember that. Mr. McDonald?
I wanted to share that I was invited to and attended an orchestra, orchestra performance last Wednesday by the Governor's School for the Arts. And I was blown away. If you have not attended their programs, especially the orchestra program, from the very first note, I was, I was amazed. So check them out. They're having a few fundraisers. You might want to consider supporting as well, as I am. And talk to me more about that if you'd like to after.
Ms. Felton?
I'd just like to take the opportunity now and that whole, but I'd like to say that the African-American male summit was phenomenal on Saturday. Although we were incumbent with bad weather and lots of school days, the event was met with great enthusiasm. We had over 253 students that attended. And I'd just like to say that Dr. Smith and the Kellam administration was very, greeting us very warmly. And I'd just like to say that Dr. Parrott, who is also the Equity Council God, did a magni- magnificent job in pulling this all together. We had other visitors from the Hampton Roads area, but the VB males were impressive. They did really well. And keynote speaker was none other than Honorable Judge Kevin Duffin. He's also a product of VB schools, was very good, and he spoke well to the students and attendants. The theme for that summit was life-ready development, your blueprint for your dream. It was really great. I enjoyed it. Mr. Keane was there as well, keeping us in order. And Ms. Richard Wright opened with a great greeting, I want to think of it as well. So the attendance is really great. I would encourage my colleagues to try to attend the upcoming event for the next African-American male summit.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Yes, Caroline and I attended the Achievable Dream, Lynn Hayley Middle School presentation last night for the community. And thank you, Ms. Lewis and Ms. Woodhouse, y'all did a great job. Only a handful of people showed up, so we're thinking that's good news, that everybody's gotten the information. This is the second night of information, so looking forward to that rolling out next year. And so, thank you.
I attended the one in December, and there were less than five people who showed up for that one as well, so.
The word's gotten out and everybody seems to be comfortable, so.
All right. Anyone else, Ms. Wright?
Carla.
Oh, good. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, next on our workshop is Compass to 2020 Midyear Update. Dr. Spence?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So just to add a little bit of clarification, or additional clarification, for maybe for the public around the removal of the one about accountable reform, state accreditation. There's been a lot of changes to the state accreditation model, and BDOE is still figuring out how they're going to calculate those accreditation ratings. And so, we are, we were told at a recent meeting that we would get kind of a test run of those calculations by January 31st, which would allow us to do some comparison to sort of current accreditation ratings versus projected accreditation ratings based on a different model. So we just thought it was best to wait until we had all of that and could talk about it at the same time. That said, we are going to carry on with our Compass to 2020 midyear updates. So to do that, Dr. Robertson and Dr. Baneky, I think.
So, thank you very much. We're here to spend some time with you today, updating you on what has been occurring with Compass to 2020, our goals and strategic actions over the last several months. At the moment, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Baneky, but I do want to call attention to my colleagues who serve on the Compass Collaborative Group. We meet monthly to review our work priorities, discuss next steps, and communicate that information throughout the entire division. So I'm going to ask my colleagues who were on the Compass Collaborative at this point, please stand. I know they hate being recognized, but if you're on the Compass Collaborative, you can please stand. You too, Dr. Byrne. Don't hit your head if you stand there, because you are there. So we meet monthly, so and when Dr. Baneky's going through this presentation, at the conclusion or any point during the presentation, if you have questions, feel free to ask. But if you have questions, they may be answered by Dr. Baneky, or they may fall into Dr. Cashwell's camp, or Mr. Wright's camp, or Mr. Capore's camp. Because again, we all work off of one voice, and that voice tonight is Dr. Baneky.
Thank you so much. I'm done setting up my, I've got my cough drop, okay, let's start coughing my water, okay? I'm ready to go. So thank you, Dr. Robertson, sorry, I had to do that up top. Thank you, Dr. Robertson. It really is my pleasure to be here with you to provide an update on the work we've been doing to support Compass to 2020, our strategic framework. As you may recall, to assist with the full implementation of Compass to 2020, on an annual basis, we develop what we call a strategic action agenda, where we lay out the priorities for the upcoming school year. Think about these as bite-sized chunks of the five-year plan. And it's specifically focused on what we're asking our schools to do and helping move that work forward. Okay? So in our presentation, I'm going to give you an update on our progress on the strategic action items, and also bring to mind the fact that we gave you a copy of the strategic action agenda at your July retreat this past summer. I'd also like to place this work in a broader context, because it's easy when we're looking on an annual basis at our progress to lose sight of the bigger picture. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the bigger picture, and also talk about planning ahead. But before I jump into all of that, I wanted to highlight a few things off of our Compass to 2020 website. The first thing I want to do is highlight our navigational markers. You received the most updated version of these navigational markers as a memo from the superintendent in December of this past year. As you recall, we update these navigational markers two times a year. I think starting next year, we'll be doing it three times a year. We update it as the data becomes available, so that's a living ongoing way of measuring our progress for Compass to 2020. We have on here not only the performance by indicator for each of our goal areas for all schools, for all students, but also for subgroups. And if you haven't been out to the site in a while, a new, something else that we have out here now is we've posted our academic equity indices as well. And they're available with a description of what those are and why we, why we calculate those. The other thing I want to draw to your attention is our strategic framework. This past fall, the Compass Collaborative worked to review, we review on an ongoing basis, obviously, Dawn indicated this is the group that oversees the management of the plan, and we meet monthly. And we took a critical look at the strategic framework this past fall. Remember when we introduced this framework more than two years ago? We introduced the idea that our goals would remain the same, but there would be strategies that might be updated, or strategies that might be added to support the work. I wanted to highlight to you that we have made some revisions to the strategic framework. And I would describe those revisions as minor modifications to a few of the strategies and some cosmetic changes. So, wanted to show you those, make you aware. First, we've put a revision date on the framework, so you know, as when it's been revised as of. And for transparency purposes, we also provide a click, a link to the original framework, so that it isn't hidden anywhere, this is what we said we'd be working on, this is the updated version of it. We also include on our framework now our core values as expressed as our behavioral imperatives on the front. And this is helpful, because a lot of school divisions are actually looking at our plan, and we think, why not package everything we want them to know about us as a school division in our strategic framework? In fact, as I was reviewing my notes for tonight's presentation, I received a call from a school division in South Carolina that had questions about our framework, and questions about our navigational markers, and they were excited to find this information for us. And then other changes, we thought it was important, since so much of our work as a school division is really focusing us down that road of transformational learning, transforming learning for students in our school division, that there should be some language that speaks to that in the framework. So we've added that to some of our front matter to our strategic framework. We still focus on challenging our students to reach their full potential and supporting them to do so, but we want to make sure they're also highlighting the work we're doing around transformational learning. And then some of the other minor changes to strategies, if you recall, under Compass to 2015, we had language where we were, we were working with responding to student needs model, RSN model. But I had to shift it over time, and that focuses on the student response teams. So we changed that language to reflect the nature of the work that we've been doing and are asking schools to do. So it reflects not only what we've accomplished, but also where we're going in our future direction, making sure it's captured in our strategic framework. Now, before I move back, actually, do you want to leave here? You know what? Before I move on to the update, I just want to remind you how we use the strategic action agenda. It really guides our professional learning focus for our teachers and our administrators for the upcoming school year. It helps direct the central office and the type of supports and resources we provide to schools. And it really is ever-present in our discussions of the school division. I think by the end of this presentation, I hope there are a couple of things that stay with you. I hope the idea of alignment stays with you. I hope the idea of ongoing support stays with you. When I say it's ever-present, if you've been in room 113, you know there are huge posters of our strategic action agenda on the walls. If you've not been, if you've not noticed, there are two copies that are up there. It isn't just for a visual, but it's for the reminder of the work that we're engaged in this year. It also appears each on the senior staff's agenda, as a border to that agenda, to keep the focus on the work we're attempting to accomplish. And it's the conversation we have in the Compass Collaborative each month is focused on our strategic action agenda. So what I'm going to do, just orient you to the next couple of slides, I have a copy of our strategic action agenda. I hope it's big enough for you to read on one of the screens. And what I'm going to do, instead of, the navigational markers are the data that we use to measure progress. What I'm going to talk about is the support provided schools to move the work forward. So on each slide, there'll be the strategic action agenda item I'm addressing, and the type of support that we've provided schools this year to achieve, to work towards that action item. So during the, the first one I'd like to speak about is focusing on fostering student agency. This work of transformational learning and putting a focus on the student disposition within the transformational learning continuum, right? And asking schools to partner with us, and with their staff, and with their students in this work. So with fostering student agency, as you recall, during the 2016, 2017 school year, so going back to the prior action agenda, we had schools engage in a readiness, assess their readiness to transform learning. And based on the data that came out of that, we identified the student disposition as a great starting point for this work. We used the readiness results from the 16, 17 school year to identify the focus area for our administrators' conference for the summer of 2017. Now, I'll say that the administrators' conference, that's a bit of a misnomer, because over time, we've increased, made more inclusive who comes to that meeting. So for example, this past year, for the administrators' conference, in addition to the administrative teams, each school was, provided the opportunity to invite up to five other staff members who could attend, with the idea being that this work takes teamwork, right? So I think it speaks to recognizing the collaborative nature of the work required. I think it also speaks to recognizing teacher leadership, and how you really want to make forward movement. You can't focus all of your energy and effort at administrators, you invite teachers into the work to lead the way within their buildings. So we have that as a focus for our administrators' conference. We also, to assist in this work, Teaching and Learning developed customizable professional learning plans that they may avail to schools to use for division-wide mandatory learning days. When I say customizable, there are a variety of topics available to schools, including student goal-setting and reflection, personalized learning, a focus on the five Cs, communication, collaboration, citizenship, critical thinking, creative thinking. Customizable in that they were provided with a learning plan that they could adopt the whole, a learning plan as was, or they could modify it for their particular building, to suit the needs of that building. We also provided ongoing support for the strategic actions by providing professional learning sessions at citywide principal and assistant, assistant principal meetings this year. And at the elementary level, we've done work at the elementary level and the secondary level to support this. One thing I'd highlight at the elementary level, is at the elementary level, schools were asked to identify a teacher at each grade level to serve as a transformational lead teacher. And these lead teachers are meeting particularly, to participate in planning sessions where instructional strategies, content connections, curriculum resources are shared. And for the secondary level, Teaching and Learning has developed monthly presentations focused on transformational learning. And these presentations are shared with principals monthly at their league meetings. First as a, so that they have a preview into the content, also an opportunity for feedback on the content. But then it's also shared with department chairs, who are then responsible for sharing it at department meetings. That's another way of spreading the professional learning and assisting. And on top of all of that, there are a variety of professional learning courses aligned to student agency and personalized learning. And now, if you're worried that there's going to be a slide for each box, it gets better. Okay, so three at once, right? So I want to talk about these three together, because Dr. Cashwell provided you with a presentation back in November on Goal Three, and Goal Three focused on the work around mediation, positive behavior, I'm practicing like abbreviations, positive behavior and reinforcement supports, and student response teams. And the work has been ongoing there to support Goal Three. The only thing I want to point out is it's ongoing support that we're providing, either through types of mediation training for school counselors and administrators, ongoing support for our student response teams, citywide, again, you'll see a recurrent providing learning sessions at citywide principal and assistant principal meetings. So again, this is where I'm hoping you'll see, not only do we say, this is what we'd like schools to be working on, then we work alongside the schools, providing support to help make that a reality. All right. Our strategic action agenda also includes on focus, also includes a focus on implementing the recommendations from the special education audit, and maximizing the use of the program compliance support teachers. Did I get that right? Because I never do. Okay. And to support this work, what we've done, what we did was clarify the responsibilities of these individuals in supporting this work. And with all schools, have analyzed multiple sources of data, and been asked to identify a goal related to the achievement of students with disabilities, and to include that goal in their plan for continuous improvement. Because we know that what, we have to measure the important things, and that's important. Measure, assess, and support. And then we also offered citywide principal and assistant principal learning sessions in this area for schools. Another focus area on the action agenda is the academic and career planning process. And you know that the school counseling services in the Office of Student Support Services has worked collaboratively with school counselors to really flesh out and develop great resources to support this process for students. And we believe that this process isn't just the work of counselors, that it's the work of all staff for supporting students' future aspirations. So we called it out that way on our action agenda. And we've worked to support that more recently by providing overview presentation at principal league meetings. It's an ongoing focus at the monthly council meetings, and we have upcoming learning sessions planned for our principals and assistant principals at the citywide meetings. Now, as you're, I'm sure you're aware, throughout the 2016, 2017 school year, in an effort to ensure consistency and accountability, all secondary schools focused on grading practices, on developing grading guidelines at the school level. And they did that by having teachers work by department, grade level, or specialized force to identify the grading practices they believe would be most successful in their classrooms and buildings. From there, school committees and teams, kind of parents, teachers, and building administrators reviewed the plans to make sure they aligned to the divisions 2017, 2018 grading guidelines. And the schools submitted their guidelines to the Department of School Leadership for review and feedback, and received assistance in communicating their grading guidelines to their communities. And finally, strategic action agenda includes continued emphasis on expanding digital resources to support transformational learning. And that's involved two different things, right? One of them has been the selection of a learning management system to support this work, and having our digital learning anchor schools field-test the learning management system, which is school-age. And we've been gathering data along the way to learn from this process as we move towards a phased-in, division-wide goal-out of the learning management system. And secondly, to continue the deployment of devices based on funding, based on readiness, and based on school feeder patterns to further this work to support transformational learning. You will be receiving a workshop specifically focused on the learning management system, what we're learning, what we're hoping it will accomplish for us as a school division supporting this work in an upcoming school board meeting. So I'll just say, more to come. Now, turns out, so when I was developing this PowerPoint, I liked this design for one or two reasons. I liked how it was a midpoint. Initially, when I was developing the PowerPoint, I was thinking 2017 to 2018, we're halfway through this year. And then sadly for me, I got really excited, thinking, no, no, it's more than that. We're halfway through the strategic framework. So, confetti cannons, but just for me. No one's going to get excited about stuff like that, right? So we're actually halfway through this framework, which just seems like we just did offer there. Am I alone in believing that? But then, when you see the amount of work we've accomplished since we started the framework, you'll know, it feels like it's actually been longer than that. So whether it feels short or long depends on who you are. So, I thought it would make sense, let's do a little bit of a recap on our work to date on our strategic framework. So, we have implemented some pretty big initiatives to support this framework, and I thought they were worth calling out. And it's not just the big initiatives that desire, that require the attention, there are many other key supports we put in place to move this work forward. And I think when you see it all together, I hope you'll have the same response I did. So under Goal One, which speaks to setting high and holding high expectations for our students and supporting them, what better way to do this than to, I clicked the head, to articulate high expectations for students in the form of framework? But it's more than just saying, hey, we have high expectations. It's articulating what do we expect to be happening in our classrooms? And then it's more than, I feel like I'm a Ginsu knife commercial, hold on, there's more. It's more than that. It's also providing the supports to the teachers to achieve those desired outcomes on the daily basis. So that's the teaching learning framework. So, but then to balance the, we're going to hold high expectations and challenge you, to balance that, we do, we're going to support you. And that's the student response teams, making sure that we, preventing students from falling behind, okay? But we can leave out the work that we've done, think about the work we've done around balanced assessment systems, specifically work on performance-based assessments, so that we can be moving students towards doing those authentic learning tasks that we want them to be doing, if we want them to demonstrate the five Cs. In addition to balanced assessment system, we have a coaching framework to reinforce and support the teaching and learning framework. About the changes we've made to the revised grading guidelines to support high expectations. The tiered support to schools, so that's more than just saying we're setting high expectations, we're there to support you through that. And here, applying an equally lens to the work that we do, particularly as it relates to achievement. That's just Goal One. Goal Two. Now with Goal Two, you know this focuses on providing students with personalized learning opportunities to help them pursue their future endeavors. You know, this work started out on, you've had a presentation, I think, from Dr. Cashwell, who's talked about the two tracks we've pursued through this work. I think, I like this graphic, not just because I created it, but because I think it speaks to learning, the learning that we've done through this process with our design fellows, the grassroots approach that we've taken, the digital learning anchor schools, and the work around digital learning, and how those have merged together for our focus to give, what that has accomplished, let me slow down, I got excited. What that has accomplished is, it has allowed us to cast a vision for and pursue transformational learning. Two and a half years ago, right, when we started this work on Compass 2020, no one was saying transformational learning, right? You might have heard some people talking about personalized learning. But what's at the core, and it's not just a renaming of, so now we're calling it transformational learning. No, it's really about identifying the enabling conditions that make it happen, make what, I remember when we presented the graduate profile to the board at the time, and I remember Mr. Edwards said, "This is great, but how do we make this a reality for our students?" And how we make this a reality for our students is pursuing this route of transformational learning, of focusing on student agency, so that the ownership for learning is with the student. So they see that they have choices to make and decisions, and they have the power to make these decisions. And we can talk about, if you read about personalized learning, because very few people are using the word transformational learning, if you talk, if you read about personalized learning, people will say, "It's not new. It's been around." But what's new is the ability, we believe, to scale with the right supports, with technology in service of learning, in service of supporting. But that's why we're pursuing an LMS, learning management system, school-age. But again, there have been other supports for this, this, let's say, in the form of providing schools, think about providing schools with, the foresight to provide them with instructional technology specialists, technology specialist technicians, to support this uncharted territory, this work that we're going towards. And then also the work of revamping the academic and career planning process, so students can clearly see the pathways available to them and how they might be pursuing those. Goal Three, social emotional development, I've already, I won't spend a whole lot of time here, but think about the work we've been doing to phase in positive behavioral intervention supports. And thank you for your patience as we do a cohort approach to phasing that in, but you know that when we want change to happen, right, it can't be all at once, taking it a phased-in approach, I think. So in addition to alignment and ongoing support, I hope that you're also seeing strategic decision-making in the way that we roll out some of the initiatives, well, hopefully all of the initiatives, not just some, but there'll be a lot. But also here, the work for the student response teams that we've been doing, and introducing practices like mediation to help make sure we have a right and restored relationship between students and teachers when it's needed, when it's needed. Remember, we laid a foundation for this work, if you think back to when we took a really critical view of our discipline data and formed the Student Discipline Task Force. A lot of this work emerged out of the work of that task force. Think about the recommendation to provide grant training to selected staff in our buildings to focus on building relationships. to focus on building relationships. And we also had a Division One professional learning focus that first year of our strategic framework on learning environments and building learning environments that were conducive to student learning. And again, just like we apply the equity lens to achievement, we apply the equity lens to behavior, because the two are inextricably linked to one another. And Goal Four, we were excited about the work we've done around the career lattice for teachers as a model for how we provide staff members with opportunities and pathways that they can pursue, particularly for teachers who want to remain in the classroom but also have opportunities for leadership. This career lattice allows them to see those potentials, or if they want to transition out into another, into another position. But it's more than just articulating opportunities, it's about providing professional learning to support them as they pursue those opportunities. And you know that for us, it's just not an internal focus. We know that if we want to accomplish what is set out in Compass 2020, we welcome and we recognize the importance of partnering with our community in purposeful ways to move the work forward. And you've seen the work that the Office of Community Engagement has been doing with engaging community needs assessment, that's really looking at, turned it a targeted way of looking at the needs within a micro-community by looking at the needs, the bearers, the assets in the, within the feeder patterns. If that's not enough, since the time the school board adopted Compass 2020 as its strategic framework, we have revised our core values. We have implemented a teacher appreciation campaign in the form of Great Dreams Need Great Teachers. We've expanded, or I feel like I'm trying to pump you up. We have expanded professional learning opportunities.
Confetti cannons, we're waiting.
We've expanded professional learning opportunities to all staff. And also developed a mess, a system of measurement for our strategic framework in the form of our navigational markers, our equity indices, and taking that down to a level of schools to help them make good data decisions and help move this work forward as they monitor as well. So I was hoping you get this slide, and I hear audible gasps, but I didn't, so it's in my head. I, so two things, I think of when I, two things I think of here. One is the word wow, which is a really technical term. Wow, that's a lot. I'm hoping you're thinking that.
Wow, that is like, whoa, so much.
Okay. Well, thank you. I have cue cards, it's right over here. Yeah, it's so much, but it's not so much that it's not meaningful, and it's not so much that it's not aligned, and it's not so much that it isn't moving the work forward, is what I'd say there. So first, wow, and then, not to sound like too much of a suck up, but thank you. Thank you for supporting the work. Thank you for the work that you've done to support this work. Thank you to the principals here in the room, for the schools who are doing the work of this strategic framework, who also see the vision of it and are moving it forward. So wow. And then, maybe it's just me, but I find comfort in knowing, this isn't a soup du jour, right? The purpose of this graphic is to show, this work continues. This isn't the fad of the day, this is, we are committed to continuing this work because we believe this work matters and because we believe this is what our students deserve from us. So, and yes, it's time to begin planning for the next strategic framework. This is why I brought my, sorry, can I do this? This is why I brought my mug, I love Gantt charts, yes? Merry Christmas, get the headshot, it only has a hour, right? So what are we going to do moving forward? One thing I want to highlight for you is something we're excited about, is this targeted landscape analysis. Now, as you may be aware, or you may be hearing for the first time, I'm not sure, Virginia Beach City Public Schools was selected to partner with Two Revolutions on a project funded by the Carnegie Foundation that will run through June 2019. And this partnership is designed to support our ongoing efforts to create authentic and deep learning opportunities for our students. So a little bit, since that may, this may be, you may not know Two Revolutions. Two Revolutions was founded in 2008, and it is a national education design lab, and they partner with school districts to develop future of learning systems and models. So we're excited about the, what could be emerging from this work. And specifically, excuse me, I really do need my mug. They've committed to engage in a landscape analysis for us, with us. We're in the process of convening a community advisory, I got, community advisory group, I'll get there, who will work from representing school and community people, who will help us have an independent view of how ready we are as not only a school division, but as a city, to do the type of work we want to be doing for transformational learning. So I'm excited about having this independent view in. Two reasons, one is, I think it's only naturally going to continue the momentum we started under Goal Two. And secondly, it's going to help with the strategic planning process. We'll have information that can then inform that process. So we're looking forward to that. And then in addition, in the fall, I'm going to skip you all for a second, I'll come back, this is our work review, this is, we're going to do an organizational alignment survey, the fall staff in the fall. And the purpose of this survey is really to try to tap into issues around how aligned are we with our mission, our strategic framework, our core values? Are we providing the supports and empowering people to move the work forward? Are we effectively communicating our priorities and promoting teamwork, all things that we value? So we believe that the results of the organizational alignment survey will also inform the strategic planning process. Now, what I have on the right side of the slide are, you know, touch points with you all, because of course, you're involved heavily with the strategic planning process as well. We anticipate, you'll give us time on the agenda, gathering input from you at the, on the school, on the planning process as part of your retreat in July. And we would also then anticipate developing a plan that we would bring back to you in the second quarter of 2018, and then formally begin the process of the strategic, developing the next strategic framework, starting in January of December, January through December of 2019. So I look forward to continuing this journey with you, and I want to thank you for your role in ensuring that we're true to the work outlined in Compass 2020. And at this point, I invite you to ask any questions you may have about our update.
Yeah, hopefully you didn't feel like this was a fire, fire hose approach. There's a lot of information here, and there was some information that we didn't share. I encourage you to go onto the website, look at the Our Journey. We've updated some of the work that we've done over the last several months related to Our Journey. That will help you communicate with your stakeholders and the community about the work we're trying to do. And then I also want to highlight that Virginia Beach was selected for a case study that will be written up in at least one, if not two or three educational journals in the spring. It was done by Dr. Philip Lanou, who represents a successful practice network. Dr. Lanou was the National Superintendent of the Year in 2015. He retired in 2017, and he's doing work with that group. And he came in December and visited a couple of our schools to, to learn more about our school improvement support process. And he had many, many very favorable comments to make about the work, interviewed some teachers and students about the work, and they're in the process of writing that up right now. And we hope to have a sneak peek of what that write-up will look like, at which national magazine it will go in, probably early March. So we're doing some really good work, and so Lisa did mention that it's not unusual for us on a regular basis to get calls from other school divisions to talk about strategic planning. If you look at Wake County Strategic Plan, and some of you know who's the superintendent at Wake County, they came to see us and they modeled their entire process after our process. And I think imitation is often the highest one, flattering. So we're pretty proud of our work, so we're boasting a little bit, but we really look forward to your feedback, because your feedback over the years, even before with our Compass 2015 plan, has, has really played a key role in some of the decisions that we, we've made. So we're all available at this point to answer any of your questions, and we'll just open the floor.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Edwards.
As you were moving it into the elementary schools, is it, are we approaching all grade levels in parallel, or are we, you know, coming down from the fifth, fourth, third? It seems like there's a maturity level that would be a factor in, in how, how successful it could be.
You're talking about PBIS?
Yes.
Oh, PBIS?
No, no, I'm talking about this, transformational.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, yeah, I was trying to get at what's the it, right? So the it you're talking about is transformational learning. What I'll say is, we've had, when we had the design fellows who were K through 12, we, we thought the same thing. We thought, I don't know what this will look like at the elementary level. And I have to say, each one of those teachers who worked with some of the youngest students were themselves surprised by what their students could do. So I think there's a natural tendency, first, there's a natural tendency to want to do that, that way, working from one, thinking it's a maturity level, but I, I know you're not doing this, but there's a natural tendency to sell a student, sell students short with their, what they can do even at a really young age. So I don't, it's not been a phased in that way, right? So it's been a multiple-pronged approach, but it's also been sensitive to where schools are in this process and where I'm going to support some movement along. So.
And if we're completely honest, the level of focus of a particular school is impacted by accreditation. So thankfully, you know, we didn't have to provide an incomplete picture. All the changes to accreditation tonight, we'll get some more time to handle that. But if you're a school that's struggling to need accreditation, there, there's a delicate balance that needs to be met between being able to create the environments we're looking for in transformational learning that will yield high results, or the sense of urgency around, wow, these kids really need to perform on this test. So all schools have been exposed to this work and supported, Dr. Cashwell and her team, as well as Mr. Wright and his team, provide differentiated support to each of these schools depending on what their own individual needs are.
And then I, I just wanted, can I make a follow-up comment, not necessarily answering a question, I don't know if that's okay, but I hope in no way in my presentation am I sending you the message that mission's accomplished, right? What I'm excited about is the continued focus and staying true to the vision of where we're going, and that we're making forward momentum. We know it's an ongoing, so I, I, as much as Don likes to brag, I mean, Don says we like to brag, I'd like to, yeah, say, this is not mission accomplished. He wasn't saying that either, but I just want to be clear, this presentation, you're not left with, mission accomplished, we're done, check the box, now we're moving on to something else. We understand this is ongoing, he understands that too, but I just want to clarify.
It's really impressive. Any others? Mrs. Ry?
If it's possible to just give an edited version of, of the work behind securing the Carnegie grant.
So, interesting, we were, the genesis of this really might be tied back to some work, to some work that Dr. Cashwell's team has been doing around performance assessments over the last several years. Two Revolutions is aware of Virginia Beach through that type of work, and heard about the work, literally heard about what Virginia Beach was doing, contacted me in late, either late October or early November and said, hey, we got this grant from the Carnegie Foundation to, to, to do this project with one division and one city in the entire country. And we've got a really strong group, but we felt like we'd be remiss if we didn't, from what we're hearing, reach out to see if you're interested. Well, if you guys know Dr. Spence, as soon as I shared that with him, the answer was yes, we're interested. And so we threw our, our hat to the ring. No sooner than I completed this application, it was within 24 hours I got a response back from a gentleman with Two Revolutions that said, we're really intrigued, but we are on a seriously compressed timeframe. We are meeting with Carnegie Foundation on a monthly basis, we really want to have our selections done by the time everybody breaks for Christmas. Is it possible for us to do a deeper dive and put a group together and come out and do a site visit? And so, yes, we did. We worked with Eileen Cox's team and Christie Wright's team and Dr. Cashwell's team, and we put together a group which included Frank Malbin from the Virginia Education Foundation, Doug Clyer with BB Vision, Jerry Stewart with BB Economic Development, and some others. And Two Revolution staff was so impressed that going into the meeting, we were, we were a finalist of five. When they left the meeting, it was pretty much, it was down to us and another school division, somewhere in the country, I have no idea. And their conversation, they went back to the Carnegie Foundation. And their, their dilemma with Two Revolutions was, we're either going to pick up a community that has a lot of potential, but they're not doing the work, or we found a community that is doing the work and has potential for us, instead of starting at point C, we can start at point F and get to the next level. And so that's why we were selected, and I'm really excited about it. And you guys are going to hear more about that. Ms. Melnick is serving on the community advisory group to represent the school board, and we have our first meeting on February the 12th, and this landscape analysis work will occur over the next three months. And the goal of that landscape analysis work is to come up with one or two what we're calling network prototypes that the division can, can investigate more deeply next year. And what I think, what I hope we'll find is, is additional support with the community, higher education as well, to advance the pathway work we're doing, the work we're doing around Goal Three and social emotional development. So it, this is pretty prestigious, I guess, you know? Sometimes you get numb to some of the stuff that we're doing. And so again, one division, one city, and the entire United States was selected.
Ms. Melnick?
And if that's not, if that story's not a testament to the incredible work that you all are doing every day, I don't know what is. Thank you. And our teachers and our principals, it's, it's incredible, it really is. Thank you.
Ms. Mammy?
Just a question regarding the input for the planning process, when do teachers have an opportunity to give their feedback?
We provide that, that typically occurs once we have, so first of all, I shouldn't say this right, should I? I know, you shouldn't have to listen to me process out loud. I'm not going to say we're going to follow exactly the process we did the last time, but it's going to stay true to that nature. And that nature was, and you remember, if you recall, one of the, I don't know if it was a commitment we made, the commitment was that we would make input a priority, that it would be a primacy. And so the whole point in coming to you with the feedback for the planning process is we show you where in the process that input will be received and how we'll receive that input. So you will certainly have a say into what does that look like and where does that happen? And that happens typically in the development of, it did two ways last year, last time, in the development of the goals and leading up to the, that process, but then also engaging them in the design teams and develop the strategies, so.
Yeah, we, we got their community input on the front end, we built off the goals, but then on the back end, how it measures, what actually they did to help operate.
Is that all teachers or just select teachers?
Well, open it up to, to the wider group and seek what you want as volunteers.
Right, so it was a mix, right? So we did some focus groups, so those were select people, but then there were wide, vision wide survey, vision wide opportunities. We don't want to restrict an opportunity for someone to input or feedback into it.
And we're also not ready for prime time, but we're, we have another project going on to create this, this, this concept of innovation, big idea hunt, where we open the platform up to all staff in the division to generate and share ideas around innovation that might be able to support our work. So we're creating a process for that to happen, and so there's another group working on how we can create a platform to collect that information from staff. Because if you really want to affect change, it needs to start from the middle and, and let it work out. You know, sometimes if you mandate something, it just, in essence, killed it.
Ms. Weems? And then we need, we do need to wrap this up real soon, so.
Yeah, there's a lot here, a lot here, and thank, it's above my grade scale, so thank you for your, your educational experts that are sitting behind, behind me and in front of me. I'd want to break it down to like the student, how is this going to help little Johnny or Suzie in the classroom? Because you, you brought up some key words that they are, you're not going to leave students behind, of course, that they're going to have ownership of their educational power of their choices. Well, what if they're not going to buy into that, or what if bad choices, or how, I mean...
I think we have, I think it is a, I don't want to say more obligation, I just think the future of what will be expected of people working, moving forward, if you, anything you read will say, it's not about what, they're not, I know we know they're not vessels to be filled, but they have to really be able to engage in lifelong learning because things will always change, change, just be inevitable, more so than any other time, just in advances in technology. So I think we have to work at our hardest to instill that within them, and you do that through this work.
That's right.
It's no longer, your, someone's success is no longer really defined by what they know, it's what they can produce. Because there's so much information at our fingertips right now, if we know the right questions to ask, and we have some strategy we can use to make decisions and problem-solving, then I think that's where we're, we're leaning toward that. Now, obviously, you've got to have a knowledge base, but you can't come up with any really good creative ideas.
Well, that leads to another conversation about everything in the fingertips and, and technology, you know? The folks in California now are having schools that are not using technology because they fear that we're using too much and not teaching certain things, just teaching how to access. That's a different conversation for a different day.
I was just reading an article on Twitter about... I was just reading an article on Twitter about, reading about the future, because that's a big piece of the strategic planning process too, is the future fast. And just how much what will be required of students in the future, what we need to be in line with them is actually the ability to say no. And what that means is the ability to signal from noise. Based on all the information that's out there, can you really distinguish what is fact from, or what is what you need to know, what's important, what's not? You know that sense too, even in what you're reading in social media. That skill set is a critical skill set.
Correct. That's more important than what you're reading.
Okay, Ms. Ryan, then.
I just need 30 seconds.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to close the loop on the Carnegie, and thank you for all that information. I just want to publicly thank the outside groups you mentioned, like BB, for example, BB Vision, the Education Foundation, the Development Authority, Economic Development Authority, just how key it is that this is a community partnership, this school division, which is also an economic driver for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This next topic is one we've all been waiting for. The preliminary discussion of class rank. Dr. Spence, you want to?
Well, I'm going to turn this one over to Mr. Keever, who I think has some guests in the audience with us that are going to help this.
I do, I'd like to take a tech break, get confetti cannons set up.
Do you look how close?
See, yes.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There are no folders that went around.
Yes.
Lucy, where did the screen go up here on the left? Just touch it? Oh, there it is. Good afternoon, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, and school board members. Today, it's our pleasure to update the school board on progress made with regard to discussions around the idea of class rank for Virginia Beach City Public School students. As the presentation begins, I would like to acknowledge the presence of our high school principals and assistant principals in this room. The dialogue on class rank is one that they take seriously. And their attendance today is an outward sign of the collective belief in and support for where we are headed as a division. So we have assistant principals and principals ringing the room, and we are grateful for them being here today. Our discussion today will focus on previous dialogue on the top of class rank, a review of resource documents provided to the board by way of the folders that were in front of you. We will also talk a little bit about the progress made to this point in the school year and perspectives from two of our high school principals on behalf of their colleagues. Additionally, we have a timeline for your review, specific grade point average data from the classes of 2016 and 2017, and a draft version of the E-Town Hall survey that we would like to begin as early as next week. To help set context, I would ask for you to think back to the spring of 2017 and the comments from a student at Princess Anne High School. His remarks to the board that evening aligned with other speakers and other emails that we had received with regard to concerns surrounding the idea of class rank and the inequity created by virtue of academy participation and/or availability of significantly more weighted courses in some schools or programs versus others. As you will recall, the board asked administration to gather some data and share findings as a part of the retreat in July 2017. During the July conversation, administration was asked to develop options for the school board to review and to move away from class rank as a school division. In the ensuing months, the high school principals reviewed the relevant research, examined GPA data, had conversations with teams in their buildings, and affirmed their unified belief that we should, as a division, move away from ranking students based on their GPAs. The discussion this evening will provide the school board with identified next steps in moving this recommendation forward. Please note that if approved, the shift would take effect with the incoming ninth grade, the class of 2022. Students currently in high school would not be impacted by the move. Further, as you're likely aware, the class of 2022 will enter a school with a different set of graduation requirements as a result of a decision at the state level. We feel the timing is right for shifting how we honor students for their achievement. Allow me to review quickly the contents of your folder. Item one is the letter and the talking points from the student at Princess Anne High School that were addressed to the board last year. The second item is the 2013 research brief titled Class Rank and GPA Impact on College Admissions. Item three and four are policies and regulations. I believe it's a policy from Fairfax County and a regulation from Chesterfield County. As a reminder, all four of these items were provided to the board in July as part of the retreat. Additionally, at the retreat, we gave you some very specific data around our academy students and their GPA. As you'll recall, I collected that data from you, because it could be personally identifiable. Also in the folder this evening, the proposed class rank review timeline is there. Item six would be the 1617 GPA data. And finally, the draft of the E-Town Hall survey. Prior to reviewing the timeline, the GPA data and survey, I'd like to call on two of our high school principals to offer their perspectives and input on this topic and the recommendation that we've moved forward with the plan to enhance our method for recognizing and honoring academic achievement. I will call on Dr. Claire LeBlanc and Dr. Kelly. Dr. LeBlanc, are you first?
Yes. This is on the list.
We have a rationale for just about everything.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity we need to talk today. When pressed to defend the idea of class rank, proponents rely principally on two arguments. First, they contend that recognizing a single student for exceptional achievement demonstrates our support for excellence in hard work. Second, such an arrangement is said to prepare youngsters for life, which is regarded as inescapably competitive. To this, we, the high school principals, say, the differences in grade point averages among high achieving students are usually miniscule, hundreds to thousandths of a point. As a result, very qualified students may end up looking less desirable to colleges just because they're not in a select group, the top 5% or the top 10% of their graduating class. What is rewarded by singling out those with the best grades isn't always merit or effort, but some combination of skill at playing the game of school and a willingness to sacrifice sleep, health, friends, reading for pleasure, and anything else that might interfere with one's grades. If the chance to be a valedictorian is supposed to be a motivator, then the effect of class rank is to de-motivate the vast number of students who realize very early on they don't stand a chance of acquiring that distinction. Long before entering the ninth grade, top students figure out ways to improve their standing in comparison to classmates. You're probably familiar with the system of grade weighting, in which more academically advanced classes such as Academy, IB, and AP courses are worth more than standard level courses when calculating a grade point average. If you're trying to optimize your GPA and class rank, you may be tempted to load up on weighted classes, so you rack up points. Moreover, students in our Math and Science Academy have access to eight weighted classes that non-academy students do not have access to. Without access to these weighted classes, it is almost mathematically impossible for a non-academy student to finish in the top 10% of his or her graduating class. The pressure for class rank may have negative effects on student health. A serious student, high level athlete, and Ivy League dreamer juggles as many extracurricular activities and college prep courses as possible during high school. Sleeping often does not even make his to-do list or her to-do list. And by the second semester of senior year, they long for a summer of freedom from their endless obligations. I've heard stories of students in my academy sneakily peeking at each other's grades on essays and tests and dwelling on less than five points of separation. I've heard stories about cheating on tests and projects, and I have witnessed the great lengths that students go to earn the highest grades. I suspect that class rank system has contributed to the tendency for students to validate their academic success based on comparisons. Today, class rank has much less significance to college admissions officers than a range of other factors, and the proportion of colleges that view it as an important consideration has been dropping steadily. The LOG system motivates students to challenge themselves academically. It is a system that gives control to students through honor point attainment rather than through a class ranking. The LOG system has the potential to recognize many more students for academic diligence or outstanding performance than does our current ranking system. For our high schools, it is worth considering whether class rank does more harm than good. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Spence, Chairman Anderson, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I have been asked by Dr. Keever to talk about a high school's perspective that does not have an academy related to class rank. So for Cox High School and for the division at large, what are the benefits of removing class rank from our roles? Well, for one thing, class rank is no longer a standard nationally. Over a report by the National Association of College Administrators indicated that close to 60% of the high schools in the US no longer use class rank. Class rank is also not used significantly by admissions programs in colleges and universities anymore. During the same survey, the National Association of College Admissions found that it does not even hit the top five categories. SAT scores, rigors of course is taken, number of AP classes, school's activities, and the essays all ranked higher than class rank. When you're using class rank between schools, you're comparing apples to oranges in school systems. Even in just schools inside of a division, you cannot compare Cox to Ocean Lakes or to a PA. When you go outside of the division, it's even harder to do so because we don't have the same offerings. In large school systems like ours, as Claire mentioned, the difference, our schools, pardon me, with 1,800 students, the difference between the top five and the top 20 is hundreds of a point. Also, what we found is class rank represents intrinsic motivation. Class rank creates unneeded competition between students. Students choose to take more AP courses, not due to interest, but because they want to increase their GPA only for class rank. They compete against each other instead of gaining love for learning. Class rank even keeps some students from pursuing their passions. Claire talked to me about a student she knows who was very close to top valedictorian spot. She wanted to take an elective class and her parents would not allow her because they wanted her to compete for class rank. So she missed learning what she loved. At Cox, we also have students actually hoping for others to falter. It happens in every school. Pity students against one another for the status of having the best grades shifts the focus away from learning to achieve, but also teaches students to regard their peers not only as friends or allies, but as potential obstacles to their success. At least as students trying to gain the system as we talked about, rather than focusing on learning for the benefit of learning. At Cox, last year, our valedictorian, and I know this young gentleman very well and I know the family, excellent young man, but he was neck and neck with the number two gentleman for the valedictorian. Halfway through the year, the number two individual noticed that the number one had slightly pulled ahead. So he asked him, well, how'd you do that? The number one said, well, I took an online AP course. And he didn't tell him about it because he wanted to ensure he got a little bit to go ahead. So it creates undue competition between our students instead of collaboration. As educators, our goal should be to help students discover a love of learning, developing the intrinsic motivation to want to learn more and to become caring and compassionate members of a society. Class rank does not accomplish this. In fact, I think it accomplishes quite the opposite. Thank you.
Appreciate the perspective from Dr. Kelly and Dr. LeBlanc on behalf of their colleagues. This time, I would turn your attention to the timeline, which is in your packet. And want to get your feedback on that timeline. We've tried to script out how we can bring forward a recommendation to the board and also gain some input from our community. Our goal would be to launch an E-Town Hall survey beginning on Monday, the 29th of January. We leave that survey open for a two-week period of time. We intend to specifically target feedback from our current sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who would be most impacted by a shift in decision-making. From there, we would take the results of the survey, and as a group of principals, we would meet again in the middle of February to review the results and see if there are any data points that were concerning or alarming to us. Almost simultaneously, we would work to bring forward recommendations in terms of policy language for the Policy Review Committee to review. That would occur in the latter part of February. In March, we would bring the survey results back to the board as well as potential changes in policy and regulations. Then depending upon the status of that workshop and the sense of the board, we would bring forward policy revisions in April for both information and then action. And then work with the Department of Media and Communications to share the shift in policy and reg moving forward. Again, it would be effective with the class of 2022. I'm happy to address questions about the timeline, or I can go forward and walk you through some of the data that you have in front of you as well.
Ms. Williams?
Just a question on the two principals that spoke. So are they represented in all the principals? I missed that part.
Yes, ma'am, I think that, correct.
Okay, so that's.
Yes. Weird.
The other principals in the room are nodding.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify. And also with the E-Town Hall, and I notice, I mean, it's a great way to get feedback, but is there going to be any feedback where actual people can go? Physical bodies?
Face-to-face.
Yeah, face-to-face, and they can ask you questions that's not in this whole thing? Or do you not think that that's advantageous? Do we just not get enough people or?
I think that we could look at the results and then make a determination if we needed an additional conversation around what the results shared with us. Right now, there's not a plan to do a community meeting or a town hall meeting. Our perspective has typically been through the E-Town Hall, that those that have the sense of wanting to share will take advantage of that option. I don't think that would hinder folks from reaching out to you, however.
Yeah, well, I mean, I still think a lot of people like to be there physically and ask questions and have kind of a dialogue instead of a short paragraph of this is what research has found.
Sure.
So I just want to keep, yeah, just as long as you keep your mind open to that possibility.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Manning?
So this is definitely an idea that I support. One of the things that I'm looking at here, I'm just completely shocked at how many students we would have from summa cum laude range. And, I mean, is it that easy to get a 4.0? I mean, I'm just shocked. I mean, we've got 30% at Ocean Lakes who are 4.0 or above. So 30% of the students would be summa cum laude.
So you want to start talking about the data, which I'm fine to do, but we want to move away from the timeline.
Okay, well, yeah, I've got questions with all of it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go back to my timeline question. Sorry about that. Okay, regarding the timeline, I think we only have one chance to make a first impression here. And this is a topic that could be very contentious if it's not presented in the right way. And I think it needs to be presented in the right way upfront. You know, I'm just glancing at some of these questions. I think some of these questions, the way that they're being asked could be leading questions. I would like some more time to be able to really take a look at these questions and ponder them, maybe talk to some folks, talk to some parents on what they think of these questions, just to make sure that we're asking them in the right way. Is this actually what you're proposing to send out?
The draft E-Town Hall?
Yeah.
That is the proposed, correct. And if there is feedback you have on that, we're happy to accept that through the week. One of the goals would be to stick with the timeline. If the board wishes to review this in April for a decision that would impact our incoming freshmen, which probably needs to be made by May, then I would think that you're going to want the E-Town Hall to be available in the not-too-distant future. So the longer we push in terms of window for E-Town Hall or opening that window, the more challenging it may be to bring a recommendation forward. But our intent was to take feedback on the E-Town Hall survey, close that out on Friday from the board, and then be prepared to open that up on Monday, so. So is between now and Friday enough time for review?
I hope so.
Okay.
I have just a quick question. Is it possible to add a little open-ended way for people to respond at the bottom of the survey? I know that you'd have to read all of those, but I just wondered if that would be. I know that you'd have to read all of those, but I just wondered if that would be, instead of, you know, if they're taking the time to do this, they might have a comment that they'd like to make at the end. I don't know, a hundred words or less.
Let me make sure I understand what you said. A comment box with a character limit.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. No, but now we're going to discuss in terms of the number of words. So what, here's what I would ask. By Friday, if you could kind of guide us in terms of the number of characters or words that you would allow in that box, that could help us to make some determination about moving that forward.
I mean, I'm all for this, but, you know, like I said, we do need to hear from our constituents about this as well, and I'm sure that's what part of this timeline, so I'd like to hear what our constituents have to say. Next is Mr. Edwards.
We've got a professional staff that knows how to communicate. And in terms of trying to draw people out, they're really good at this. So I'm reluctant to have us take a chainsaw to it too much. I mean, yeah, if we want to stick out with comment box line or something, but, you know, for us to think we have to take their proposal and go out and talk to people in town before we even let them, that's, I'm not a very efficient way to do business. My biggest concern, though, was the lead-in material. Is it going to be just written? Or are they going to, could we like capture those two principals from our tape and have a video on there? Is that the plan? I'd like them to get the advantages that we had of hearing that today.
So we may elongate the time when the E-Town Hall goes out so that we can.
Well, no, I mean, that's on the shelf. So anyway, whatever I lead thanks for work and be effective is fine with me.
More people should say that, Mr. Edwards. So what we can do, Mr. Edwards, is link to this school board workshop as part of, the video from this school board workshop as part of the E-Town Hall so that they can have the value of your conversation as well as the remarks from the principals.
That sounds good to me.
Ms. McLout?
Thank you. I don't have questions about the timeline. Can I move on to something else? Is that okay?
Works for me.
So I actually do want to go back to the survey itself. My question is, how did you frame these to get the information that you were desiring that will help you come to a conclusion to bring a proposal to us?
The intent, based on our conversation in the summer, was that the board was interested in moving away from class rank and bringing a proposal back. So the questions weren't whether or not the community was in favor of moving away from class rank. The questions were really generated with the idea of giving us a glimpse into the thinking around honoring students and whether or not the designations that we're bringing forward are the appropriate designations. The one piece of the puzzle on valedictorian and salutatorian is one where we've actually asked, should we continue to do that?
Right, and that makes sense to me. But there's, in looking at the framework and how they're done, that helps with an explanation as to why they've been framed this way, so that makes logical sense to me.
Okay.
Just my comments regarding the presentation and to the two principals who shared. While I agree that there are some who are five or six students at each high school who are losing sleep and trying to compete for that, and they're not eating, they're not sleeping, they're binge, I call it binge studying, since we binge Netflix, we binge study now too, I think. So what I think that is interesting, though, would be, we could, as a devil's advocate, I could almost say, creating this kind of a scale and trying to find that honors actually could encourage that additional kind of behavior from more students. Five students know they have the potential of being valedictorian or salutatorian. Now we've opened up the floodgates too. Is that going to change? You know, will there be less leisure reading because, you know, Joe Snow down here who has a two-point-nine is now going to stop leisure reading because he has this chance to be an autograph? I'm just throwing that out there as, you know, I don't think it's bad because I think it encourages them to try, and I think that is the part that I like about this, is it also gives them something else to achieve for. I am wholeheartedly agreeable regarding electives that you brought out and the parents discouraging. And Leslie will remember it. When I spoke with the orchestra and the choral district, I actually implored, I begged the parents, please, when your children get in high school, please still allow them to take those classes because they're mathematical and they're important and they make you a more well-rounded person. So I think, I truly believe that would make a difference in this as well. I think you're always going to have competition, and I think that everyone in any work life, in any part of your life, is always going to do what they need if they want to climb the ladder, whatever is at the end of that ladder for them. And so that's one thing that I don't think will ever change. So thank you for letting me make comments.
Ms. Melnick?
One of the things that we talked about last summer was, for those colleges that still require a class rank, that information will still be available to students for that purpose, correct?
There will be a percentile piece.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The military academies, as I understand it, as well as a couple scholarship opportunities
Yeah.
do want some type of percentile designation, we would be able to report that.
Okay.
It would not go on a student's transcript. It would be something that we added in.
You could provide per, I mean, it.
Correct.
Ms. Manning?
So I just want to clarify, is, there's not a proposal here to get rid of weighted classes, is there?
No, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. And then with the wording here, I just don't want the public to think that we're not taking into consideration their feedback. I mean, I would like to see wording in here that the school board feels that the community input is very important, and they want to hear that. When I read the first paragraph here, it almost sounds like our mind is made up. We just kind of want your opinion. So again, it's just with what, how you present it to the public. I want them to know that it's very important for us to get their feedback and that we're going to listen to it. So that's just why I want to have some time to really consider this. I think we all should on how it's worded.
Mrs. Frye?
Sorry, give me. Who else? I just want.
Ms. Williams, and then we'll come back to you, Ms. Frye.
Along with the class rank for the, you know, military academies and different colleges that still need that, if I'm a student and I just want to know my class rank, or if mom and dad want to know my class rank, is that available at any time? Would that still be available if they request it?
It's not something we're going to publish.
No, not published, but if I call, can I get my class rank?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay. And I'm just, with the competition, I'm like Ms. McLout, and I think we all know this. I'm not sure if this is what this is going to do with the top competitive students because I think a lot of that is just, you're born with that DNA just to, you know, compete. Just like we have some athletes that practice way far beyond, some students and, you know, I know my own children were criticized for, you know, practicing too much, but that was just their DNA that wanted to get good or studying too much. So I think that, you know, life is competitive with everything. You know, siblings, to jobs, to colleges, to getting into med school, to getting into the right college, to making the team. So, you know, I mean, I'm open to this. I think it's a great idea. I'd like to hear from the public, definitely. But as far as competitive nature and allowing students to take more relaxing, fun classes or electives with those top kids, I don't know if that's going to be a huge change or not.
It's hard to stop from taking a class online.
Right, yeah. So, right, yeah, so they're going to do it. So, but I'm anxious to hear from the community. This is an interesting topic.
Mrs. Frye?
Okay, so to speak to Mrs. Melnick's question and the answer, I'm happy to know because every time I've talked to an admissions officer at a college, they basically want to just know context, so percentiles provide that. My other comment, and it's a little different twist. And again, it's my personal experience as a parent, and I think a lot of their peers, at least when they were going through the ranks here, and it really meshes with our personalized learning that for, I feel, many students, what motivates them are their personal goals. And a personal goal is, I want to go to college X. I want to go into the military. I want to get an athletic scholarship. So I, it's almost like they're, so for me, what this does is simply expands the opportunity to reward academic excellence to more students, and that's the way I look at it.
Same, Ms. Melnick?
And again, I don't think this was supposed to eliminate competition because the top five markers for colleges are the number of AP classes, right?
Right, it's the academic rigor. It is how you, what the grade that you earn in that course, how you perform on some standardized tests, your level of involvement.
And are going to be encouraged to still take AP classes and rigorous coursework. It's not to eliminate competition. It's the one-hundredth of, you know, or the one-half or one percent, that's what we're talking about. This very tiny cutthroat piece at the very top.
And I think it is also the goal to help reduce or eliminate the inequity between those students who can't simply access those rigorous courses based on the programs that they're in. I mean, the genesis for this conversation, really, if I could remind you, is related to some repeated comments that this board has heard from students who are zoned for a particular school, not in that particular academy, and can't scratch the top ten, can't scratch the top ten percent in the sense that their rank or value or worth is in a system that they aren't able to even compete in. And I think that as we have dialogued as a group of principals, that has been sort of the focus point. The focal area for us is around how to address this concern that the board has asked us to look at in a way that is most acceptable.
And without creating two schools within a school by having two numbers, a two or two.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Ms. LeBlanc, I saw your hand up.
Yes, just a couple other things. If you look at the two thousand sixteen graduates at Ocean Lakes, and it says that the top nine out of the thousand twenty-seven, and we have one that was thirty-nine, those are misleading. Both of those were academy students, and both chose to drop out during their senior year because they weren't going to finish their senior capstone project. And then when you look at the hundred and seven kids who finished with above a four-point-oh, I did look to see how many of those were academy and how many of those were non-academy. Twenty-two of those were non-academy students.
Of the hundred and four?
Of the hundred and seven.
Of one twenty-seventeen, oh, twenty-seventeen, I'm sorry. Twenty-two of them were non-academy. So they're access to AP courses.
Which I think speaks to the fact that it's not, to your point, I mean, it's not easy to achieve a four-point-oh. I mean, I don't think any of the teachers in the Ocean Lakes Academy would say, if you got a four-point-oh in my classes, you had it easy. So it's difficult, challenging work. It's thirteen roughly percent of our students who achieve that. I actually personally like the idea that it would open the floodgates to other students trying to achieve that.
Try hard, exactly.
And I think that that's what we want. I think the distancing with class rank is you sort of figure out.
Yeah.
I mean, I was in a class here in Green Run with nine hundred and thirty-three students. I was thirty-third in my class with a four-point-oh and higher. And, you know, it was, it wasn't like, you know, I was ever going to crack the top five percent of the class. I wasn't going to get up there and be, you know, a valedictorian. So for me, I was going to take the classes I wanted to take. You know, and I was going to do as well as I could in those classes, and I think that's what we ought to want to incentivize. Take the classes, I mean, my daughter's a perfect example of this, right? So my daughter is an orchestra kid, and we had this huge, long conversation about her wanting to take theater this year because she's just a creative type, but I was really concerned about what is that going to do to her GPA? And at the end of the day, we just decided, you know what, pursue what you love, and she's in theater. And I want to incentivize more of that and less of this, like, and frankly, as a parent, I'd like to incentivize our parents to think more about that for their kids and not be worried about her taking an AP class and let her take that theater class.
May I add to your story? My story is about my daughter at Salem, which this man convinced me that was the right place for, and he was a hundred percent right. She had the choice of IB and there, and she chose the Visual Performing Arts Academy. And it was the smartest decision ever to allow her to pursue what she really loved. And quite frankly, she graduated toward the top. She didn't win the valedictorian, but honestly, she actually got more scholarship than the valedictorian. She was well-rounded. She did the other things, so this may actually benefit them financially as well.
Mrs. Frye?
I was just going to add to your comment about the inequity, that we couldn't look at it as once the academy structure was developed here in Virginia Beach, it essentially rendered the traditional class ranking system obsolete.
Correct.
And we haven't caught up to that. We're attempting to.
Do we have any other questions? I think that's it.
So in closing, I would just ask for any additional comments with regard to potential considerations for the survey to be to us later than Friday so that we can be prepared to open that up and target our communication beginning on Monday between now. And we will come back to the board in March.
Thank you for bringing this forward to us.
Thank you, and thanks to the principals for attending as well.
So we are going to recess and meet for our formal meeting at six o'clock.